Good evening. I'd like to welcome everyone to our June 10, 2025 Regular Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Mayor Reeves.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Here.
Councilmember Brown is absent. Councilmember Dyke.
Here.
Councilmember Olinger.
Here.
Councilmember Ramekis is absent. Councilmember Russell.
Here.
Councilmember Schmidt.
Here.
Councilmember Short.
Here.
Any changes to the agenda? If not, could I have approval, please?
I move the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? All right. Plagiar Legion, Jamie.
With the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Consent agenda, Mr. Hoy.
Good evening on the consent. Oops. On the consent agenda, you have the fiscal year 25 budget amendment for Snow and Ice Division. You have fiscal year 26 vehicle and equipment purchases. You have important recommendation for internal budget transfer, joint community pool. You have important recommendation for uncollectible utility account write-offs, treasurer's reports, and minutes of previous meetings.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Close? All right, thank you. All right, special recognition, Kayla Advanced Accreditation Award. Executive Director Craig Hartnett will present the Culpeper Police Department with his seventh advanced award.
Well, thank each of you for allowing me to be here this evening. You've seen my face probably a number of times here in your wonderful city. In fact, it's such a wonderful city. I told my wife that I was coming over tonight. I live over near Appahannock and Warren County area. And she said, well, I'm coming with you because it's such a great place to come. And as we were driving into the town, she said, it's such a great place to be here. And let me tell you, that doesn't happen by accident. That happens really because of good governance and folks like you and your predecessors who had a clear vision about your duties and responsibilities and those things that you valued in your own communities. It also doesn't happen by accident by having a great police department committed to a common cause to support that. And that is what you have with the Culpeper PD. They've been involved with us in the accreditation program now for, Chief, I can't remember how many years, what?
2005.
2005. So 20 years of connectivity to demonstrating their excellence in public safety and their commitment to continuous improvement. That's not an easy task because we hold agencies accountable to our standards and they're responsible for maintaining that continuous compliance, keeping an eye on resource management and responsibility, and balancing the administration of law and jurisprudence with the values of the community. Very, very difficult. If we watch the things that are happening in the paper even this evening, it's a very difficult task and it requires a connectivity to what's important to the community, how they manage their resources, and how they ensure that they're delivering their services in a way that complements the needs of this wonderful town that you've all worked so hard to develop. If I may, Chief Settle, I'd like to read this presentation tonight to you. It says, "Be it hereby known that the Culpeper, Virginia Police Department, having fully demonstrated its voluntary commitment to law enforcement excellence by living up to a body of standards deemed essential to the protection of the life, health, and safety and rights of its citizens it serves, and having exemplified the best professional practices in the conduct of its responsibility, is hereby, upon the recommendation of the members of the commission, awarded this certificate of advanced law enforcement accreditation effective on the 16th day of March 2025, and is recognized as an accredited law enforcement agency for a period of four years, this being their seventh award." It's important that you understand that every year, our organization reviews the Culpeper Police Department to ensure their continued compliance with standards. And in the fourth year, they're presented to our 21-member review commission that ensures that the reports that have been generated hold to the compliance that they have established and that which is important and recognized as best practice. Your organization, the Culpeper PD, has done that consistently now for seven straight times, if you will, and you should be proud of their work and have confidence in knowing that they stand ready and prepared to deliver on their duties and responsibilities. Thank you again for allowing me to be here. Chief Settle, thank you again for your work and contributions to the broader law enforcement community.
Everybody tighten in. I'll just say a few words. I can take zero credit for this. It's the men and women behind me that make accreditation happen. It's the community that makes accreditation happen. It is a supportive governing body, a supportive town manager and other town departments that makes accreditation happen. So it's not just a one-person show. It is a team effort, all the way from the chief of police to the newest recruit officer to our civilian staff that makes it all happen to our accreditation manager that puts it all together for the commission and for the accreditation team. So it is a team effort and all these men and women behind me make it happen by doing excellent reporting, excellent service to our community, and living up to the standards of the goal of standard. And we view this as a report card to our community. That's where we view it. And I think we got an A. So, thank you and thank you to these men and women behind me for making it all happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council behind you, and I'm going to come outside.
Oh, okay.
Thank you. Council, you'll probably want to stand so we can actually see you behind us, please. We have some call people for you.
Short. That's all right. I get the higher stasis. Stasis short.
Smile at your chief, sir. Go high just on the hook bit. It's a better angle. Be smiling, that's right. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you for your time. Public forum. The public forum is the opportunity for town citizens, businesses, and groups to speak or bring to our attention any town government-related issues. Please state your name and place of residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Groups are requested to have a spokesperson. If there is anyone here for a public hearing, please hold your comments until later. Is there anyone would like to speak tonight? No one? Close the public forum at this time. All right. All right. 9.01, public hearing. Public hearing on cable system franchise renewal. Hat.
Tonight, we're holding a public hearing for the purpose of receiving comments on a proposed cable franchise agreement to be issued to Verizon, Virginia. This agreement would be a five-year agreement. The prior agreement, which was issued in 2009, has expired, and Verizon has expressed interest in renewing its cable franchise within the town boundaries.
Open the floor. It's time for public hearing. Does anyone like to speak tonight on this? This is on the cable system.
Mr. Mayor and council members, my name is W.M. Bunker, and I reside in Willoughby Shade subdivision in the north end of town. On April 12, 2022, more than three years ago, I addressed this body, and I spoke about Verizon FiOS and cable TV, not serving my neighborhood and surrounding areas after the original 15-year franchise agreement had been in effect for 13 years. And by then, 80% of the franchise area should have been served. At the end of the 15-year franchise agreement, the entire town should have been served. It wasn't and still isn't. If it had not been for your finance director, Howard Cartel, looking into the issue in 2022, I dare say I would not have FiOS today. Mr. Cartel was responsive and kept me informed on the progress in serving my area. On January 3, 2023, more than a year and a half after I brought the issue to the town's attention, I was able to get FiOS at my home. Don't get me wrong, I enjoy FiOS. The internet speed is fast, the cable picture quality is excellent. As with anything, there have been hiccups and service interruptions, but overall, I'm very pleased with the process. Woodscape Apartments, which is stone-stroke from my home, doesn't have FiOS. Recently, a utility company spray-painted and placed yellow flags in yards to mark the existing lines, excuse me, so that Verizon Fiber could be installed to serve the 90-unit apartment complex. Should not that have been served under the original franchise agreement? I would hope that the current five-year franchise renewal, if approved and which I thoroughly support, would ensure that all town residents meeting density requirements be served as was required in the original 15-year agreement. The town needs to do a better job monitoring Verizon's franchise agreement. After all, the town collects a franchise fee from Verizon for cable customers to support the Culpeper Media Network, which broadcasts meetings like this one, to inform the public what government is doing. The more cable subscribers, the more revenue to support the Culpeper Media Network. I urge you next month to approve the franchise agreement and ensure the entire town is served by Verizon as promised in 2009. Thank you for your time and consideration in this matter.
Thank you, Wally.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak? No one? Oh, you want to speak? All right.
I will echo. My name is Jonathan Krawchuk. I work in the town of Culpeper at Culpeper Media Network. And I just wanted to take a moment to publicly thank Howard Cartel. Howard's done an amazing job in making this happen. Very nice because I'm still able, you know, have a job. But I just wanted to publicly say thank you for all of his hard work, and I appreciate it. He is a valuable asset to the town. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else? Close the public hearing at this time. All right. Ordinance number 0-2025-004, cable franchise renewal agreement, Verizon, Virginia LLC. First reading, hat.
As previously stated, Verizon, Virginia, is seeking to renew its cable franchise agreement within the town of Culpeper Limits with a five-year agreement that would expire in 2029. A new agreement would continue the PEG grant fees of 15 cents per month per subscriber to the benefit of Culpeper Media Network, which is operated jointly between the town and Culpeper County. The recommendation is that council holds the first reading of uncodified ordinance O2025004, granting a cable franchise renewal agreement to Verizon, Virginia LLC, to operate a cable system within the town limits franchise area for a period of five years. The first reading would be tonight, June 10, 2025, with a second reading scheduled for July 8, 2025.
Any questions for here?
Can we waive the second reading and approve it tonight?
If you'd like to.
We approve it.
Can I get a sec?
Yes.
Second.
Second.
You want to do a roll call, Madam Clerk, or just roll call, please?
Yes. Councilmember Dyke.
Aye.
Councilmember Olinger.
Aye.
Mayor Reeves.
Aye.
Councilmember Russell. Councilmember Schmidt.
Aye.
Councilmember Short.
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao.
Aye.
The motion carries.
Thank you. Public hearing on proposed unified development ordinance, Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. This is your second public hearing on the draft Unified Development Ordinance, so I apologize. The presentation is very similar this evening. I'll keep it fairly brief as an overview. For those who wish to learn a little bit more about this, we do have a hub site available through the town's website and the Planning and Community Development Department page, which has a great deal of information, including the full draft. So, our timeline to date in terms of how we got in here, this process kicked off in 2019 when council appropriated funds for the hiring of a consultant to aid with this draft. Later that year, Duncan Associates was selected as that consultant. The following year, a zoning and subdivision ordinance advisory committee was selected and started meeting. In February of 2022, there was a joint presentation to the town council, and the planning commission focused largely on the form-based code aspects of the draft, but providing an overview of where we were at that time. In February of 2024, we published a hub site with a great deal of information about the town, including draft maps at that time, summary tables of draft zoning uses that would be permitted within the different districts. And then in January of this year, we did release the full draft of the ordinance for review and comment by the public. So, since that release of the full draft this year, we've had overview presentations provided to town council, multiple ones to the town planning commission, to the Joint Board of Zoning Appeals, to the Culpeper Chamber of Commerce at their State of the Community event, as well as the Culpeper Renaissance, Inc. board. We've had public hearings, one before the town council, the second one being tonight, and two before the planning commission. We've met three times with the council's 3P committee to discuss the draft as it's progressed and had received public comment. The planning commission has held three separate work sessions on this particular matter as well. And we've had 17 different open houses or essentially drop-in opportunities for the public that the department has hosted for them to weigh in, ask questions, provide comments, and feedback as well. In terms of the code itself and what's proposed, there are a number of consistencies with what we currently have in the code. These are related to minimum residential lot sizes, widths, and setbacks, the landscaping requirements, the historic overlay district, flood hazard areas, subdivision design and improvements. The majority of the processes and procedures that we currently have within the town will remain the same. Our violations, penalties, and enforcement, as well as the nonconformities that we have, those are largely prescribed by state code, and so we're being consistent with that. Where we do see changes with the proposal comes primarily with new zoning district categories. Related to these in some districts are new building types, which tie into the form-based codes, which will be applicable to all of our commercial, industrial, and multifamily residential developments. So, these are essentially prescribed standards as to the design of the buildings. We've got an increase in the required parking for single-family residential developments from two to three to try and address the residential parking issues that we've had in some parts of town. We have a simplification of our uses in our use table to try and make that much easier and be more based on performance standards as opposed to very prescriptive descriptions. That relates, then, as I said, to that increased permissiveness of commercial uses. We've updated our wireless telecommunications regulations to bring them in line with state code, since that changed a couple of years ago. We're also proposing to allow accessory dwelling units as a by-right use within our residential districts. These currently require conditional use permit. We're providing increased distinction between home offices and home-based businesses, and with those home-based businesses allowing a great deal more commercial activity from homes that we currently present, as long as they retain that residential character of those communities. We've provided definition and regulation for short-term rentals that we currently have very limited guidance on. Regulation related to the location of drive-through facilities and fuel pumps. Updated our watershed protection overlay to reflect current practices and current state code requirements. And added administrative modifications, which allows for greater flexibility in some unique circumstances to approve those changes. So our next steps are to conduct the public hearing this evening. Chance for council to hear from members of the community on this particular matter. We will then be bringing it back to the 3P committee later this month, and we will be looking for definitive guidance from council as far as their comfort level with the draft UDO and moving it forward to final public hearings and a final version with the planning commission and ultimately, again, town council before the end of this year. So, before we open the public hearing, I'd be happy to answer any questions that any council members may have. Otherwise, I do encourage you to listen to your constituents.
Any question? All right. Thank you, Andrew. Open the floor. It's time for public hearing. Please state your name and place for the residence for the record. Limit your comments to three minutes. Anyone like to speak?
Hi, Mr. Mayor, council. My name is Andrew Doughty. I live at 602 South Blue Ridge Avenue here in Culpeper. First of all, I'd like to commend the staff for all the work on this UDO. It took me a long time to read the 272 pages, and I know it took a lot longer to write it. So, anyway, congratulations to you guys. A lot of work. I've only had a couple of comments on it. I've sent two letters to the council. I've badgered you with a couple of letters, which probably explain it, and I won't dive into that too much. One relates to, I had a few concerns about short-term rentals, and I don't have invested interest in short-term rentals, but just urge the council to take a close look at that provision. Second concerns noise ordinance, particularly as we look at data centers. As you know, the UDO proposes to replace Chapter 27, the current code, but it doesn't replace those antiquated noise standards that you guys, we've been dealing with this year. And if they're old standards, they're antiquated, but there are no standards, as I can find them, in the UDO. I don't think it's necessary to put, you know, new noise standards to reopen the UDO and try to stick some noise standards in there, but I do think this is an opportunity for us to develop some reasonable noise standards to include into Chapter 13. They're a little more definitive than what's in Chapter 13 right now. Chapter 13 is a very ambiguous standard. An industrial firm cannot make any noise that is audible inside a house or a business adjacent to it. The proffers that the two developments have put forward and been approved by the council have a DBA standard. And so I'm afraid if we don't try to clarify some of this, we're headed for some kind of legal conflict down the road. And I think the town would want to try to avoid that. So I think this is an opportunity to take up that issue. Anyway, whether, you know, you're in favor of data center development or opposed to data center development, I think all of us would agree, none of us really want data center noise. So, anyway, I would urge the council to take up this issue, you know, concurrent with looking at the UDO. This is an issue we should look at. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor Reeves and council members. My name is Teresa Geesting, and yes, I'm back again. My husband and I have been homeowners at 202 Gardner Street for the past 44 years. We're closely following the proposed Unified Development Ordinance public process. It's a highly technical document with a goal of providing structure for future growth. We hope the updated ordinance will protect and enhance Culpeper's small-town feel. At the May 13 Town Council public hearing, I voiced my concerns for the three following proposed changes. As there have been no noticeable changes to the maps or documents, I wish to delve a bit further. It's time for transparency regarding the logic behind the proposed uses. First, I oppose the proposed rezoning of our property and other properties in the area between Blue Ridge and Virginia Avenue circles. According to the current zoning map, these properties are zoned R2, but are proposed to be categorized to the new RX residential mix and neighborhood mix types. These designations allow for multifamily properties in RX and NX zoning and a variety of commercial uses in the NX category that destroys the small-lot traditional housing types that currently prevail in the neighborhood. At this time, the remaining parcels are small, so why propose upzoning for possible multifamily housing? Is this an example of spot zoning? I maintain that the residences in this area are currently zoned R2 and should be rezoned most closely to the current zoning, which would be equivalent to RT residential, traditional, as is the case with other properties on the south side of Sperryville Pike that are being rezoned from R2 to RT. Secondly, I oppose the proposed NX neighborhood mix designation for five parcels, 401, 405, 509, 517, and 519 Sperryville Pike. Two of these homes were built in 1929. The others are modest homes. All five are currently zoned R2. The NX category, which allows for commercial and large entertainment venues, are not what residents of Culpeper need in that area. With all the vacant commercial property within town limits, the last thing we need is another ugly commercial space there as we enter town. There is the old adage, "Things don't just happen." There's always a reason or a mover in the background that wants to accomplish some goal. What we need to learn is, what's the driving force behind these changes? The big questions are, who and why? So far, there have been no logical reasons supporting these zoning changes. Transparency is a current buzzword used in public spaces, but in this case, it seems we are encountering more fog than clarity. So our only conclusion is that behind-the-scenes buttons are being pushed to accomplish an end that will benefit a few but are not in the best interest of the majority of property owners, who are in it to create permanent homes for their families, not quick flip for future personal gain. My question is, are there public officials who are in line to benefit financially from upzoning in any of the zoning categories? If so, they should recuse themselves from voting on these issues. Thirdly, data centers should not be allowable use within town limits. The proposed industrial zoning category allows data centers with a conditional use permit. The thought is that the town officials can control aspects of the project that way. Keep in mind, you're up against very deep pockets and savvy, high-powered attorneys. Don't be enticed by large casp profers and promise of additional tax revenue. They in no way compensate the citizens for the long-term pain and negative impact on our quality of life. The city of Manassas is an example of promises made, not kept. Please remove data centers as an allowable use in the proposed zoning within town limits. I hope council will preserve Culpeper's small-town character. I submit these comments in writing to council for the record.
Thank you. Anyone else? Come on down.
Hello, everybody. Jessica Amos, 801 Southeast Street. I'm here to speak on behalf of my neighbors on East Street. I wasn't prepared to say anything, but just to give an update, we continue to seek signatures from all of our neighbors to get our zoning from RT to RS, which is more appropriate for what the street is now. And we have gotten almost all of a contiguous group except for one, who we are working to reach out to, but it has been put on us to get in touch with neighbors who don't live on the street, so we are still kind of slowly pecking away at that. So, just more of an update. We're still working on this, and hang tight. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Good evening, Mayor Reeves and other members of the town council. My name is Sean Miller, and I'm here tonight as the director of the Fredericksburg Area Builders Association, specifically government affairs. And while I'm not a resident of Culpeper, I'm here tonight on behalf of our builders and developers, as well as small business owners who live and work in the town of Culpeper. I would like to submit the following comments regarding the ordinance before us tonight and its proposed changes to Chapter 27 of the town code. To start off, you know, while FABA appreciates the intent of Culpeper and staff's desire to modernize zoning regulations and support smart growth, we have some serious concerns about the long-term effects that this UDO will have on development, governance, and the character of the Culpeper community. A key concern is the shift in decision-making authority from elected officials to zoning staff. We feel that this reduces public oversight and limits opportunities for citizen input. FABA believes that decisions that affect neighborhoods, property values, and quality of life should remain transparent and accountable to the voters, not insulated within the administrative process. And though the UDO attempts to support greater density and mixed-use development, we feel that it conflicts with Culpeper's comprehensive plan, as it can lead to high-density development in areas that are truly planned for lower-density development. for lower-density development and vice versa. And we feel that this undermines the town's long-term vision and threatens the rural character and open space that residents value. The UDO also raises concerns for cost. These new standards and their complexity will increase the cost of development and housing, driving up taxes and the overall cost of living for Culpeper residents. Small and mid-sized builders will find it harder to meet stricter and more complex requirements, which will reduce competition, as it will leave only large developers able to comply. And this can hurt local investment and limit housing options. And from a governance standpoint, the ordinance can be viewed as sort of an overstep by the government that infringes on property rights by mandating aesthetic requirements and design features that not all builders or buyers even desire. This adds a new layer of administrative complexity and workload for planning staff, who must now verify driveway or garage compliance in site plan reviews. And this will, of course, increase permit review times and strain limited municipal resources. We've actually reached out to a number of our sister organizations further south in North Carolina and South Carolina, and their localities have imposed similar UDOs and found challenges with enforcement, understanding complexity and review delays as well. So, and we've heard very similar challenges echoed by members of Culpeper County's staff and their elected officials in previous public hearings. And to wrap up, Faba believes that zoning reform should be thoughtful, accessible and grounded in the community's vision, and we urge the council to reconsider the UDO and work toward a more balanced and transparent approach that protects the values and rural character that make Culpeper unique. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No one else? Close the public hand at this time. 9.03, resolution adopted the CIP. Andrew.
Apologies, trying to get all the public comments noted there. So, before you this evening is the capital improvement program. This was put forward by the planning commission pursuant to Virginia State Code 15.2-2239. The planning commission is tasked with preparing a capital improvement program for the town for the upcoming five-year period. There's not a whole lot of change in this year's CIP from prior years, but I'll quickly run through the projects that are proposed. The one new one that is introduced is a study for the new police building, looking at the space needs there going forward. At this time, all that's being proposed is the study itself, and that's already been funded in the approved FY 2026 budget. This will help to guide and provide council with insight as far as what other future needs may be for the police accommodations. The next project is the Madison Road Connector Trail. This has actually been pushed out. We previously had had this proposed in earlier years, but it's been pushed out to FY 29 and FY 30, because the majority of the funding for this is proposed to be acquired through outside grant sources. Currently, there's not a great climate for us to be able to be able to achieve those or obtain those. So, we pushed it out. We will be continuing to look for that, but the goal of this is to have it be predominantly funded from outside sources to provide this important link, which is proposed initially as a loop trail, but ultimately to look to connect our two major parks in Yow Meadow Park and Rockwater Park. Next project is multi-purpose courts at Yow Meadow Park. These are proposed in the FY 27, FY 28 years, designed taking place in the first year and construction in the following year. Again, we're looking for these to be predominantly funded through grants and outside sources, but we believe that these should be a greatly beneficial amenity to the residents of Culpeper, allowing for a variety of different sports, including pickleball, footsaw, which is the type of soccer, and other uses on these particular facilities. Lakeview Park is another one that has been shifted to the out-years of this particular plan. This is currently proposed for FY 2030, and again, looking for outside funding sources to aid in the development of this particular facility for recreational opportunities within the town. And finally, the Salt and Abrasive Storage Building. We've kept this in the plan, and in the instance that we needed currently, we are able to use a facility from the county. And so, we've kept this on there, just in the event that at some point in the future time, we weren't able to use that facility, we would have this on the books to be able to do it. So, it remains an out-year project that we're hoping does not come to fruition in terms of actual demand. So, at this time, the report and recommendation from the planning commission is that council do adopt the FY 26 to FY 30 capital improvement program. Be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Second. Any discussion? Roll call, Madam Clerk?
Councilmember Olinger?
Aye.
Mayor Reeves?
Aye.
Councilmember Russell?
Aye.
Councilmember Schmidt?
Aye.
Councilmember Short?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Yao?
Aye.
Councilmember Dyke?
Aye.
The motion carries.
9.05, town and county interaction committee. Would anyone like to add anything to our next meeting at this time?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to, for the next interaction meeting, bring up the topic of what the future court is going to look like, the impact of that particular neighborhood, and just what the thoughts are behind the design.
Thank you. Anyone else? All right. Thank you. All right. Town council member report. Any questions or comments? Do any of the council members have anything else? If not, we are done.